All right, thanks folks. You can see it's crowded in here, so. I would ask, is there any additions or deletions?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If I could first, before we get started, I realize it's a week away. It's on Memorial Day coming up, maybe a moment of solace to see if we gave the lives to this great country.
All right, I'd ask for one moment for the troops, as they say. Thank you, Bob, for bringing that up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Now, does anyone other than myself have any additions or deletions for the agenda tonight?
My understanding, we need a cemetery discussion. So I would say a cemetery discussion under old business.
Okay, is there a second for discussion? All right, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Is there any other additions or deletions?
Did you say you had one?
I have one, yes. I just want to make sure if somebody else didn't have anything. I would make a motion to go into executive session to discuss an issue on Airport Road over by the airport entrance. No, executive session.
So just to clarify, this is to discuss the legal
Yes.
aspect of it?
Yes.
Okay. I will make that a motion.
All right, is there a second?
I'll second that.
All right, motion made, seconded. Any others discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right. I'd ask for a motion with regard to the May 10 minutes.
So moved. Subject, any corrections?
There's a second for discussion.
I'll second.
Is there any discussion? Any corrections on those minutes? Good job, Katie, I think. Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Right.
Anyone opposed? We have some folks here. And if there's no objection from the board, can I skip down to those folks? This old business?
Make a motion that we go out of order and do the first, the Hazard Mitigation Plan, and then secondly, do Ed's update on the ARPA funds?
Say that.
Second motion.
Hearing no objections, all those in favor, the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Who wants to go first?
I'll go first.
Okay. Ladies first.
So, thank you, folks. I'm Stephanie Burke, a planner with the Rutland Regional Planning Commission. And we've been helping the town of Clarendon with their local hazard mitigation plan update. My role with your planning team is, has been to facilitate their planning team meetings, as well as make sure that your plan has all of the federally required contents. So, in terms of the heavy lifting for the plan update, I would acknowledge your excellent planning team, which consists of Katie, Cash, and Matt Jacobowski. So without those folks really putting in the time and effort to provide the content for the plan, we wouldn't be at this point in the plan update process. So they've really been doing a great job and have been really good to work with. So, on behalf of them, I'm presenting kind of their work to date tonight on the Clarendon Local Hazard Mitigation Plan Update. And I'll start by just kind of giving some context to folks. So Clarendon's last hazard mitigation plan was FEMA approved in February of 2016. It's a five-year plan. This one's not probably in your packet. This is the existing plan. What you have in your packets is the current working draft of the update that the team is working on. So the 2016 plan is a five-year plan that expired earlier this year. So we're working hard to get the plan update in place for a little bit later this year. So the Hazard Mitigation Plan is, as I just said, a five-year plan. It gets approved by FEMA. And it's what I would consider kind of a sunny day plan where you, you know, it's not a response-focused plan. It's a plan where you take a step back and you look at some of your community's vulnerabilities and come up with some mitigation projects that you'd like to undertake to address those vulnerabilities. So it's not the kind of plan that you would pull off the shelf if there was, you know, a hazardous materials incident in town, or a cyber attack, or something along those lines. You know, a response-focused plan is more in line with the Local Emergency Management Plan that you guys adopted earlier this month. That Matt takes that kind of lead in working with Katie to get updated every year. That's an annual plan that you guys have in place. So I just wanted to make sure that folks kind of had a general understanding of those two different types of emergency plans. The management plan, every year, response-focused, hazard mitigation, five-year plan, and, you know, mitigation-focused, as its name implies. So in terms of the Hazard Mitigation Plan's contents, I've left a copy of this review tool on the table for you guys to kind of accompany the working draft that you have. And I like to think of this as pretty much the plan contents checklist. So the federal regulations lay out in code what the plan needs to require in order for it to be approved by FEMA. So everything in the working draft that your planning team is working on is in there for a reason. It's in order to fulfill one of these federal requirements. And I've started kind of with placeholders for where in the plan you will address each of these federal requirements by noting the section that will address that requirement. And the page numbers are left as a "to be determined", because we're not sure where things will exactly sugar off by the time we get all the way through the update. But at least you have a sense for which section of the plan each of these federal requirements will be addressed. And those are, so go ahead.
So that means when the actual plan is finished, upgraded, whatever term you want to use.
Yep.
This will be, say, for instance, in the beginning of the plan, so that?
This actually gets submitted separately to the state to start, to Vermont Emergency Management. They will, they'll be the first to review the plan. And they're the ones who will go through the tool and say whether the requirement has been met or not met. And if it's not met, they will provide some instructions for what they feel is deficient and, you know, what would be needed to address that particular requirement. At this point with the Planning Commission, I've been working on these plans for two, at least two years, and have a pretty, a pretty good handle on what the plan requirements need to be. And the last couple that I've submitted within the past two or three months for preliminary approval have come back with no comments. So at this point, I think our approach to developing the plans and the content and level of detail that's in them is really on point.
So my understanding is that the actual, well, you did mention some folks here that were putting their two cents into it, so to speak.
Yeah.
But the Planning Commission, this generates from the Planning Commission and then comes over to the Select Board for approval, is that how it works?
Sure, I can kind of describe for you this plan update process. This is one of the things that we cover as a planning team at the kickoff meeting. So the planning team is going to work to complete the 2021 update to the plan. And at critical milestones in the plan update process, and tonight being one of them, they will share drafts of the plan to solicit public input on the work to date. If you'll notice, in the review tool, the planning process, element A, is really important to FEMA, that there are opportunities for public engagement in the plan development process. So not only does it dictate kind of the core sections of the plan, but it also dictates the process by which the work is done. So the planning team will work on the draft, have opportunities for public input. When the planning team is satisfied with their work on completing the entire plan, it will again be shared with the Select Board and Planning Commission and posted for a 14-day public comment period. And following the close of the public comment period, will address anything that comes in. I'll be honest, in the majority, if not all the towns that I work in, this doesn't tend to really be a high-public input plan. So the comments that come in typically are pretty minimal. And so, once they've, once we've addressed as a team, any comments that are received, the draft will be submitted to Vermont Emergency Management for what's called "approval pending adoption". Kind of think, consider it preliminary approval. That's where they'll fill out the review tool and let you know in their opinion if we've hit all the marks. When approval pending adoption is issued by the state, then the plan is returned to the town strictly for adoption. So once you get that first approval, that preliminary approval, no more changes to the plan. So we've got to make sure as a community that you guys are very comfortable with the plan contents before it is submitted for approval pending adoption.
Is there any suggestion from the state or from you guys to bring the public into this when we adopt? Or is this just adopted through the Select Board?
So tonight is kind of the first opportunity to bring this plan before the public. So the Select Board, Planning Commission members were invited to come to tonight's meeting so that they received the same kind of overview and, you know, draft plan. I hear you. So, and we talked about this quite a bit at the kickoff meeting with the planning team members, that the obligation is to provide opportunity. Okay? So sharing the working draft at a regularly scheduled public meeting of the Select Board, which I think is televised, so folks have an opportunity to watch your meeting, understand what's going on. The plan will be posted for a 14-day public comment period. So comments will be accepted through June 7th. They can be emailed to me. Or if there, if anybody on the planning team hears, you know, sometimes folks will reach out to members of the planning team that they know in town to share any feedback. You know, so we'll do that now, at this midpoint in the update process. We'll do it again at the end. And really, that's, that's kind of what we're doing at this point. The, the opportunities for public gatherings, as you know, with the pandemic, have been kind of a moving target as we get into the summer months. With the Vermont vaccination, you know, rollout, it looks like, you know, their conditions will be more favorable if, you know, you expected more opportunity for public input. But, you know, we, we talked about other, other methods for maybe engaging the public, and the planning team felt comfortable with the approach of, you know, sharing the plan at two critical, at the two critical milestones, the midpoint and final, posting it at both times for a 14-day public comment period. You know, I, I send out the draft plan to the Rutland Natural Resources Conservation District and the State Flood Plane Management Coordinator for our region. I send direct emails to local officials in neighboring towns when the kickoff occurs to let people know and surrounding communities that you guys are doing this work. And then I share with them a copy of the final at the end. So I think there's, I think there's, we do a pretty good job of, you know, getting the word out there that, hey, this is being done. If, you know, these are, these are the opportunities for, for, for public review and comment.
All right, I guess we'll, we'll see. Anybody have any questions?
That's kind of the process.
Very.
Right? So, and as I said, you know, it's, we don't tend to get a lot of, it's not like a town plan, you know, where you're getting working groups together, you're trying to assemble, you know, visioning, or things like that. It's
For the most part, my impression of this is that we haven't established a plan already. Been for the last five years or so, as you pointed out. Anything that's changed is probably minor.
Yes or no?
Yeah, well, I don't see a whole plan change. I would see certain points probably. But I think in the long run, those that were interested the last time we did this will certainly still be interested, so there may be some questions.
Excellent, yes. I mean, we, we welcome public input. That's the whole point of kind of sharing the working draft tonight. So I just wanted to, on the record, kind of describe what this plan is intended to do, because it is, it is different than your 2016 vintage plan. So the, you know, the approach to hazard mitigation planning with FEMA has definitely shifted since 2016. We're, we're really looking with this plan to assist the town in identifying all natural hazards facing the community. This is no longer an all-hazards plan. We're not looking at man-made and technological hazards. We're looking at just natural hazards. The planning team, you know, then ranks those natural hazards according to local vulnerabilities and then is going to develop some strategies to reduce the impacts from your highest-risk natural hazards. So right there is kind of a pretty critical shift from your 2016 plan. Your 2016 plan was an all-hazards plan. So, you know, that, that, the assessment of man-made and technological hazards isn't going to show up in 2021. Okay? Not to say that some of those things might not still be important, but the approach to assessing natural hazards is really different than some of your man-made and technological. And, you know, if you were concerned about the risk of a cyber attack or an active shooter, or a hazmat incident, there are just better plans to address those kinds of things than the hazard, the local hazard mitigation plan. Okay? So if we want to take a quick look at the plan, the planning team has worked through the first couple of sections. So we've got a very brief introduction and plan purpose on page one. And as you read through the draft, in terms of the plan purpose, I'd just like to draw out for folks the last sentence in that first paragraph that says, "Once adopted, this plan is not legally binding. Instead, it outlines goals and actions to prevent future loss of life and property." So this isn't some kind of contract between the town and FEMA, or the town and the state. It's really, it's just a planning tool. Okay? So that's followed by a community profile in section three. And this, the subsections in the community profile really just kind of paint a picture for the reader who doesn't really know anything about your community, like Vermont Emergency Management or FEMA, in terms of what characteristics might make you more resilient or more vulnerable to natural hazards. So a lot of the subsections in here are areas that we would have pulled from your town plan for, and other resources, but we're not trying to replicate your town plan in the community profile. Okay? Section four is the planning process, where we're going to document basically all the steps that your team is taking to get this plan update completed. So that section still has a lot of yellow placeholders in them because we'll basically circle back around at the end and fill out the changes since your 2016 plan. And table two on page four, that will kind of fill itself in as we go through the rest of this process. But the meat of the work to date is presented in section five. So completion of the Hazard Identification and Risk Assessment really marks the first critical milestone in this plan update process. Your planning team kind of undertook a community hazard risk assessment, which the results are presented in table four. And based on the scoring, identified thunderstorms with the associated hazards of flash flooding, fluvial erosion, and inundation flooding, as well as high winds, to be some of your highest-risk natural hazards, as well as winter storms with extreme cold, snow, ice, and high winds, and drought with associated water shortage. So section five pretty much lays out narrative profiles for each of those hazard, kind of highest-risk natural hazards, and concludes on page 13 with a summary of basically the history, of the event history for those, for the, for flooding events, high-wind events, extreme winter storms, and drought events. As well as then, kind of in this, in the right-hand column on page 13, summarizes the location where the town is most vulnerable to these impacts, the assets that tend to be damaged during these events, the extent, meaning the magnitude of the event, so the highest magnitude event, the impacts, meaning financial impacts in the community. So the, the highest dollar-impact storm is included in the summary, as well as the probability of that event happening in the future, which is pulled from the risk assessment earlier in section five that was presented in table four. So what we're really looking for folks to do is, you know, read through, look at the, at the work completed to date, and make sure that, you know, you're in agreement with how the planning team has really defined the extent of your areas of concern. So, you know, we want to make sure that we've captured all the locations and assets in town that could be vulnerable. We like to kind of consider this section, you know, the problem definition section, right? Because as we move forward, we're going to be addressing strategies, actions, and projects to address the problems that we've laid out in section five. I know that I'd mentioned that the plan doesn't really address man-made and technological hazards. What it does, and what it, what it does address in terms of natural hazards is defined at the very bottom of page seven in little footnote one. So natural hazards are defined as atmospheric, hydrologic, geologic, and wildfire phenomena. Hazards not necessarily, not necessarily related to the physical environment, such as infectious disease, were excluded from consideration by the planning team. So you're not going to find things about the COVID-19 pandemic response in here. You're also, in, in general, not going to find things about invasive species. But on page eight, the top of the left-hand column, there is a little inset about the Emerald Ash Borer specifically, because it was first detected in Rutland County last fall. So there's kind of a little nod to the invasive species part because it's now been a confirmed detection in the county. Do you have a question?
I have a question. I have a question. So, because of the airport, where would someone go to find out information about something happening at the airport, like a plane crash?
So that would be a response plan. And it would be the airport's emergency action plan. So Matt Jacobowski, your fire chief, is very involved in the annual exercise of that plan. So if there, if there is an event, like an air, air crash, you know, airplane crash or whatever, it's typically more of a response plan. And the airport has a very extensive emergency response, emergency action plan that would dictate how to deal with that.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you for the overview.
Yeah.
So In terms, in terms of the next steps, we've kind of covered that. We're going to post, the plan is posted for public comment period through June 7th. I would prefer if comments are provided in writing. It's just easier to keep track of and make sure that the planning team has an opportunity to address them. So email.
Is that going to be on, put on the town website?
That's, I was going to ask that. I know it's on our website, and I think you guys have an announcement section right on your homepage. It would be great if we could get the draft posted there.
We can work on that with Gloria.
So yeah, we're really looking for folks at this midpoint to make sure that they provide any input that could ultimately affect the plan's conclusions and better integrate with any related town initiatives that you have going on.
Yeah, when that, you provide that maybe to Katie, and then she can work with Gloria. But I would also suggest that, to your point, any comments be in, you know, written in hand language and all that kind of stuff.
Yes. Yep. So Katie, if you need any help from me on the notice to go with the plan posting, you just give a shout. Okay?
Yeah, I already have a notice.
Yeah. Yes, okay. I thought she, I thought she had it under, under control, yep. So the next planning team meeting will be on June 10th, right after the public comment period closes. And the team will be ready to, you know, buckle down and wrap things up. I would anticipate you probably having something in terms of a final plan for review later this summer.
Okay. If need be, we can always use the Grange Hall. If it appears as always, a lot of people that are interested.
Absolutely.
As opposed to here. I don't necessarily think that's going to happen, but just to give you a heads up.
I will leave that to the planning team. They kind of have the pulse on the community as to what, what's most appropriate. So in addition to the narratives in the plan, I'm going to leave a copy of this working map. So we, the planning team's done a great job of marking up kind of geographically on a map where the areas of concern are. So I will leave this at the town office so folks can review it. I'd encourage you to take a look at it. It will be, it should be very consistent with everything that you're going to read in the plan as far as, you know, where the locations are and what assets are vulnerable. But I'll leave that. Just make sure it doesn't get lost in the shuffle. Okay. I've got a digital scan copy of it, but if we get any more markups on it, I'll want to make sure we incorporate that into the final version of the map. Okay?
Appreciate it. Anybody have any questions? Anybody in the public? All right. Thank you very much for that. I appreciate it. Look forward to see how this rolls out. I guess that's the term we want to use.
You're welcome. You've got a really good planning team, so I think you'll have a nice plan by the time we're done. we're done.
All right. Ed?
Hi, thank you for having me. I'm here to talk about ARPA a little bit and answer the questions that I can answer. I know we pushed this meeting off because we weren't sure about all the details and the guidelines, guidance from the Treasury hadn't come out. And I have a little more information tonight, but not a total picture of what the money can be used for, because I think that's what everyone wants to know, just because the state doesn't know how they're going to fund it, some of this work and some of the assistance. Originally, it was going to be just the ARPA funding coming through from the Treasury, which had its, has to be tied to COVID-type language. It can be not tied to COVID if it's broadband, wastewater, and water supply. The state now, when they're putting their budget together, is saying, well, they might take some of the ARPA funds, but then use some of the general funds in there and mix and match. And if so, what we're doing is mixing and matching with some of the state funds. It opens up a lot of possibilities for what you guys can use the money for. So, what I want to do tonight is I'll just start off, I found this little two-pager, which is really helpful, that discusses what the money could be used for if it was purely funded through the U.S. Treasury, which then could be expanded if it is, again, a general fund funded.
And I can give you one at the office.
I was trimming around the lilac bush.
I bet, yeah.
What's that?
I was trimming a grass out by the lilac bush at the house, and I...
I was too early, and I thought you just said that I smelled like the lilac.
No, 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 no.
So, I was, I was like, all right, oh, you know, I should really watch doing that before I go to meetings.
It's all karma, right? Is that what the term is?
So, that right there, and again, you don't have to read that right now, but it's something to look at later, just gives a little guideline of the money, what it can be used for, and then all the other things that might apply if you are using the money. From what I've seen right now, the town is supposed to get about .24 million, which is like $240,000 through that. I hope that lines up with what you've been thinking in your heads right now, more or less. There's also a chunk that could go, was supposed to go to counties, but in Vermont, we don't have county government, so that chunk to the county, which is about 10 million, is going to go back to the state of Vermont, and then I think they're going to redistribute that money based on population. So, it's really 240,000 plus, I'm thinking, for Clarendon. Again, right now, if that is purely treasury, it's COVID-related, I think on Page one or two of that, it says what the, what those COVID-related uses are, with the exception, of course, of broadband, wastewater, and water supply. The League of Cities and Towns is also doing municipal assistance with this, and their role is information, answering questions. They're going to hire somebody specific just to work with towns to answer specific type, I guess, legal questions, more specific guidance. And the RPC's role in this is more project development. And so, if we're purely thinking right now broadband, water supply, wastewater, but then that could be something else, the RPC is being funded to assist towns work on some of these projects, whatever they might be, you know, if it's doing more broadband infrastructure, we would be available to help you guys just, you know, lay that out there. And we have people in our office, Samantha O'Connor, who does like broadband work. If it's transportation-related, which I don't know if it will open up to that, because there's also a transportation bill that could come out of the government, we would help you guys develop something like that. Again, water systems, wastewater, planning work with that, that's what the RPC is being funded to help the town do. So, again, which could open up to something else. We're also answering questions too, so it's not just project-related. It's, you know, Eric Hall in our office is the lead on this, and he's going to be the one where if someone here needs to call, hey, I've got, we're thinking about doing this, do you think this would be an eligible expense? It might be easier, it probably is easier to call us than to call VLCT, just because we know you guys, we work with you guys, and we're not sure of all those different relationships. So, we're there for any, I want to say really anything ARPA-related, we want to help you guys with. If it's project-related, we're definitely going to be helping you guys with if you want that assistance.
What do you, what do you think most of the funds would be used for in a town such as Clarendon, as an example?
Well, I mean, I don't know. You have some water and wastewater infrastructure in certain areas, correct?
So, like the school?
The school area in North Clarendon, and the airport area. So, if the town were thinking of expanding some of those systems, that could be something. Again, if you're thinking about some broadband deployment, that's something that could also be in there. An idea that's been kicked around a little bit is towns, a few towns coming together on more of a regional-scale project. We're not sure if that would be eligible or not. We're still, we're still in this period of getting more information on what the funds can be used for, so I don't know if that would even be eligible. I think the point in what I want you guys to get out of tonight's meeting is that, to start thinking about exactly what you said, you know, where would this money go? I know $240,000 isn't a ton of money, and if you tack on a little more, you still don't have a ton of money, right? It's not going to get you a huge project, but it could start, there could be some planning work associated with that, or even simple hookups, if like something like that, if you wanted to just take the system a little bit bigger or something like that. And so, I've been asking around to towns, you know, what's on your wish list to do? What are things that you're saying to yourselves, you know, if we just had a little extra cash, what, you know, what could we spend that on that might not, again, not tying it to anything right now? What would those things be? And kind of develop some priority lists of, well, you know, we know the school might need this, or there's something here, or, I'm trying to think of what other areas you might want to use it in, because the other towns are asking the same questions, and a lot of them come back to roads. Well, we want to do some roadwork.
We raise our hand on that one.
Yeah, but that's the one area I'm really feeling that this money can't be used for. I think at the end of the day, because there's going to be the infrastructure bill possibly, I think that might be one thing that might not be available. So, what else, what else might, what you guys think? If you just had a list, like what would be on it?
Expansion of sewer systems, possibly?
Yeah. I mean, and that one we know is eligible regardless, like regardless of where it's coming from. That's already on the list of things that you could definitely do.
Just on the back of my mind, Mike.
Yeah, up in North Clarendon.
You know, there's, the other thing some towns have been talking about is community solar farms, if that were eligible, or something to do work, infrastructure work on town halls, town garages, that might not be road-related.
I got an idea.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was going to say, there's places that that could be used.
Yeah, so again, that might, that might be one that we're not sure. It probably wouldn't be in the guidance you're reading now, but again, if it gets shot and funded from something else, maybe.
Is there a match on that?
No match.
No match.
But you cannot use it for match. Like you can't use this money to match something else.
Right, right.
Straight project.
But that down there definitely needs upgrade, probably septic issues down there and stuff, so that would be, yeah.
Why septic? You got to have a structure before you have a septic.
It's a whole different...
The septic is fine.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I think if it was allowed to be used for that, that would be my top, on the top of the list, is doing something down here to get the, get that back in, because, I mean, you can waste $240,000 very easily trying to develop a sewer plan for North Clarendon when the city's already told us they won't expand it in North Clarendon. So, there's no...
Not only that, they don't have the capacity.
No.
They don't at this point.
And, and $240,000 is not even going to get you close to building a municipal system. So, if, if it was to be used to get things going with what we've already talked about down here, because let's face it, that, talking about tying into the emergency operations and everything else, that infrastructure down there is key to responding to a winter storm, to any of the hazards we talked about tonight. That down there is key to be able to respond with town equipment. So, getting it to the point where it's reliable, because right now it's not.
What, Robert, what do you, what's?
The town, the town garage needs major, it's got major issues, from electrical to...
Heating.
Heating to, you name it. It's just, it's...
There's a lot of waste that needs to be upgraded.
Well, you can ask any of the raccoons down here.
So, I think that...
So, if that's, again...
If that was something that, you know...
I don't have that, I don't know that answer right now.
That would be something that we'd appreciate you, when you have a moment, to...
Well, and I will know as soon as the budget gets passed.
Correct.
And they decide exactly what's going to be in there, and then what would be eligible, because the state could also have limitations. It's not going to be this restrictive, but again, if they're doing a T-bill, they might...
So, the budget passed Saturday, we're waiting to see if it gets signed, right? Isn't that where we're at?
Yeah. Right, and they're still waiting to how, decide how, which chunks are going to be where.
Just curbing.
On the legislative call this morning, they still didn't know those percentages. Because there's, the ARPA money is flowing to five different pots, really. There's housing, there's broadband, there's, I'm missing three, what they are, there's, I'm not sure where they are. And each of those pots has a percentage, well, we're going to use, you know, this much ARPA money, this much state money, this much ARPA money, this much state money. So, they're still tinkering with those. So, this money is in like one of those pots, that they're still kind of tinkering what's in.
That's amazing, so they could still tinker with it even after the vote was Saturday?
Yeah, they still don't know.
So, how can you vote on something that you don't know where it's going to be?
I don't know, but I know the final vote was Saturday. I know that they voted on Saturday it's approved.
Discussion this afternoon with Art on that. Mostly just shook his head.
Because I'm sure that the governor can't sign it until all that's settled. I mean, it's got to be the final, the final, final final's got to go to his desk.
Breakdown is.
I mean, I guess what I would say would be town garage, or, you know, if there was money available to talk about, you know, I know we already have the Grange Hall as what our emergency shelter or whatever, but you could talk about potentially using it to get this as like a secondary upstairs.
Well, yeah.
You could talk about, because we've talked about what is the future of the upstairs here, you know, that's something that might be a possibility as well. And, you know, either way, both of those projects, $200,000 goes a long way to accomplishing.
Anything that was looked at upstairs, you remember the conversations, we had to put a elevator in.
Yeah.
Wondering if some of those could be COVID-related somehow, like some of the improvements when you're designing physical space, in which case you could always kind of make that tie if you had to.
So, in terms of like ideas for where, what, what projects, are you thinking like, do some town plans include enough specificity to pursue something? Or, like I know, like your 2016 Hazard Mitigation Plan might have like projects in it. You know, I'm wondering if there are any existing documents that they could at least pull from to start to get kind of wheels moving.
The vast majority was road-related, though. We are so heavily road-related, I mean, it's, that's what everything just about pinpoints.
That's a good idea.
And that's where the return on the investment would be.
Yeah, but again, pinpointing, I know we've pinpointed, and even that down there's been on the state's radar, for that matter, as needing upgrades. So, maybe it's an opportunity, because all of that is hazard response, you know...
Well, safety issues.
Safety issues. I don't know, you probably could tie it to COVID somehow. Everything can be tied to COVID somehow, right?
I was thinking one of the other buckets is workforce.
Well, yeah, and that's, that's the big thing.
And economic development, so a lot could fall under that, too, potentially. So...
Because the, the thing is, weather-related, because you don't have the indoor working space, weather-related issues sometimes tie you up if you get a rainy week in the summertime. Having workspace is a problem.
Doesn't matter what...
Workforce development, upgrading the workspace so that you actually can work when it's, you know, work on equipment inside, that you can actually get it inside and work on it. So, I think there's opportunity probably there.
Business expansion, you think, or, you know, anything?
Nobody mean on business, because you can't go on a personal level.
You mean like providing opportunity for business expansion, right?
We're pretty much at our max, like industrial park with a sword and stuff like that, I would think.
Oh, there's what, three lots left? Three or four lots left?
Yeah, but their sewer hookup, they're already allocated, I would believe.
I believe so, yeah.
How much time do towns have to use the money?
So, the money can start retroactively March first of this year, and it goes until December of 2024.
Yeah, so it's kind of, I was going to say, our school funds are similar to that. We've got like till fall of '23 or something. I don't think it goes quite as long, but our school funds are about as long as that.
And there's other, there's other funding available, not ARPA-related, that's going to be coming down on some of these big areas, that's going to be more grant-type delivered. So, putting an application in to something, it might, you might find it might be better to submit an application for something else to do the town garage or something like that.
Yeah.
So, that's another area that we could help with, is helping you guys actually, like, because right now, this ARPA money is just like coming to you.
Yeah.
You know, it's like boom, right? It's there, it's yours. But some of the other funds that are flowing, it's not yours, but you can get it. And so, that's where we could help out a little bit, if you guys needed to, one, identify it. I'm, I'm tracking your list here of what your needs are, because what I'm hoping is when we figure out exactly where the money is.
Something will fit in.
And like say, well, they could probably use this for this, and they could use this for this, and they could use this for this, and that would help, so.
That work on that garage down back though, boy, that would be...
Go a long way. It's been something that's been discussed and argued and discussed and pushed off because it's been such a burden to the taxpayers ultimately.
That's, a lot of towns say that, actually Benson just...
They don't have hardly nothing.
Yeah, well, they just, what did they do? They, they're going to do it themselves, or they were. They voted to build a new town garage, but now they probably can fund it somehow, so...
And by infrastructure, you're talking about the, the federal infrastructure bill that they're talking about, right? In the future?
I'm talking about that and then the transportation, the T-bill here at the state level.
Okay.
That's pretty flush.
Well, I know that's why we put in, what'd you put in for, three road grant this, grants this year, because they told you that they expected?
We have two.
You put in two?
No, I put in three.
I thought you put in three.
Well, there's two for a walk-around road, one for South Creek.
Oh, yes.
I thought you put in three.
Two are related to the same project, though.
But they, they encourage that because the transportation fund looked good, so...
So, I guess what I'll leave you with, besides that to look over, is to start thinking about some of these wish list ideas you might have, and stay tuned, because we're going to know very soon how everything's going to sugar out. To know that Eric Hall in our office is our point person, but, you know, I'm always around. And then we just kind of maneuver a little bit, and then, like I said, hopefully soon we can have some definitive answers. And if you guys say, okay, we like this, 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 then we can kind of start matching up.
Cool.
Funds of what you guys wanna do.
Good job. We look forward to it.
Well, we look forward to helping as always, so.
Thank you to you both.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yep. Good job.
Thank you for having us.
Stay.
Take time away from the rest of the public.
Rest.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Bye. I'll talk to you later.
Highway road permission report.
Just an update, um, just finished up Culver on Creek Road with some ditch cleanings. We actually use the material to help shoulder the road up along that section. Um, been grading roads. We hopefully by Thursday will have uh been through the whole town on grading roads. And we're just received another load of uh mag chloride for dust control this morning to keep the dust down.
How's that new tank working out?
Very good.
Yeah.
We had replaced that tank because the other one sprung a leak and we ended up going with a two thousand gallon tank. It took a little bit more than we thought to plum it all up, but we got it. Two and a half days of working on that. Um, the next project is providing we get the grants for Walker Mountain Road. We're gonna start cleaning ditches, replacing culverts, which needs to be done anyways. So we'll get ready for possibly paving in summer. And that will go from the four way at Creek Road up over Walker Mountain to East Temeth Road for that first section. And then the second section will it doesn't require too much, but the from McCormick's uh machine shop over by schoolhouse, the new bridge from the new bridge through Wilders Bridge just past there.
That's the bridge on the corner.
On the corner. Yep. That's about all I have unless somebody's got questions.
I uh got a phone call about an hour ago, um, resident of uh Sunny Hill Drive or whatever it is over off of East Street. It's that Sunny Slope or Sunny Hill, right?
Yep, Sunny Hill.
Um, wanting to pass along their thanks to the road crew. And they said they know you hear negatives an awful lot. But they felt that you needed to know, the town needed to know that since the town has taken over that road, the residents all appreciate the vast improvement and the work that has been done to make sure it's maintained, so.
I'll pass it on to crew because it's been a team effort.
Yeah.
Maintain all these.
Anything else, Cash?
That's all I have right now.
Any any support members?
Cash?
Yeah.
Have you gotten the new truck back yet? Or is that still?
That's still, we're.
Still waiting on my wiring.
They ordered the wrong wiring harness and actually what I'm possibly tomorrow, I'm gonna send the Mac up to Viking because that needs some work on it with the piston replaced on the dump cylinder. It's leaking bad and they they need to do some work on the spinner when the salt comes out.
Oh, okay.
And that operation, they're very talk to Viking. So there's a good chance tomorrow morning I'll send or sometime this week, send a driver up there, pick up, leave that truck, pick up the new one and bring it back and and then probably before winter this fall, we'll hopefully they'll have the right wiring harness, which they're having off time getting parts.
Yeah, and just to one other thing, the question has been posed to me once or twice, if spring stop lines that's stop lines, have you thought about them at all yet for this year?
We've, that's about as far as we got. We thought about them, but hopefully we can get to them. Um, then another thing I had been working about the replacement of the uh excavator. Um, we're actually gonna look at two of them tomorrow. To see where we're at, but I don't know about talking Heidi about the budgets and stuff and it's gonna be close and we'll see what the figures come in at. We might be just shy of enough funding to replace it, so.
Doesn't uh Constantino have a bunch of equipment up there? He'd be interested if you guys sell this.
Yeah. I've actually, he's called me a few times and gone up and look at the equipment he has at different times of a lot of times they're too big, what we need. Um, then there's been a couple of machines he's had that were would almost fit the bill, but they're we already got that kind of machine.
Okay. No, not another one.
To another, you know, I mean, there's not too much wrong with the one we have other than it's time to retire it.
Mm hmm.
Before something major goes and it has some value right now.
Anything else, Cash?
All I have right now.
All right, uh, we don't have any guests. No public comment, obviously. Uh, uniform discussion under old business.
So just as a reminder, the UniFirst contract expires June twenty eighth. Um, so Heidi had brought to my attention that maybe you guys wanted to discuss a policy about are they getting a stipend for their uniforms? How you wanna distribute the money and when throughout the year or all at once or so, just to start that discussion.
Do you have any formal suggestions?
Um, that's on you guys to decide.
Oh, not a decision, suggest suggestions.
Um, at at former workplaces, uh, it was pretty common to have like a quarterly allowance.
If there is such a thing, what is the budget now for those uniforms?
Um, next, starting next year, your allowance per employee, per highway employee
Yeah.
is five hundred dollars for the year. Per. So your budget, your total budget for uniforms next fiscal year is two thousand dollars.
We've been spending about five, almost five thousand a year, a year, right?
Yeah, um, we've currently with the UniFirst contract been spending over five thousand dollars a year.
That's for maintain, cleaning, stuff like that, right?
Yeah, but so starting July first, your budget is cut to two thousand because you folks determined that you were not going to go the route of UniFirst anymore. So, um, I do recommend that you come up with a, some sort of uniform policy that very much so dictates, um, this is the dollar amount or or even if if you put verbiage in saying like pending the or, you know, dependent on the um, that year's budget or something like that. So you don't have to constantly go back and alter the wording of the policy, but that you're gonna do a quarter of it, uh, you know, per quarter, you're gonna allow a quarter of the budget to be used per quarter or something to that effect, but also to make it quite clear that this is specific to the highway. Um, because otherwise you're also going to end up with other employees who are gonna say, oh, hey, well, we have a uniform allowance now, so, you know. Um.
It has always been directed at the guys down back.
Yep, it has just also been mentioned.
Yes, clarity.
It, yes, it has been mentioned that if it's not specific, that you are going to have other employees asking for reimbursement for work, uniform related items, so.
So the, is this something that we have to upgrade the policy or can we make a decision right here tonight and say that it's a five hundred dollar budget per road crew employee, then halfway through the budget season, in other words, six months, you're gonna get two hundred fifty dollars. And then two hundred and fifty dollars at the close, the additional.
So the question becomes then, is it a reimbursable thing or are you just gonna issue it?
I would say issue. Being a union guy.
It's also been my experience um at the hospital, at Casella, um, that it's always reimbursable. That they can, that it's never just given as a stipend. Because the whole goal of it is you're you're looking to reimburse them specifically for uniforms.
Clothing.
So if, I mean, if you are gonna just issue a stipend, they could go spend that money on whatever they want. So you're really not accomplishing your goal.
I tend to agree with the two hundred and fifty July first and two hundred and fifty January first. Is when they're eligible for anytime. So the first one, first half is due anywhere between July and December thirty first. Second half of it's due, they can qualify for it any af- anytime after January first to June thirtieth.
As a reimbursement.
As a reimbursement. So.
Wanna make a motion on that?
I mean, what do you think about, well, I'm discussing it right now. What do you think about that proposal?
I like it.
Uh, is the road crew aware of the change?
We've talked some about it.
Oh, yes, they are.
One that's.
We have one very irate road crew member.
He he is only one. There's actually one individual that actually uses the full volume of it. Um, the other two is.
Does including cleaning and all that?
Everything, yeah. They all use the cleaning, but the second, there's another road crew mem- one road crew member uses a hundred percent of it. There's another road crew member that uses, I'd say about thirty percent of it, forty percent of it. And the other road crew member basically uses the shirts when he's doing greasing and maintenance in the shop, that's it.
Mm hmm.
And myself, I don't use any of it.
So, but what I would say is I have no problem with cash as a garage expense going out and buying and making sure that there's coveralls available in the shop if they wanna put coveralls over their clothes. I mean, that and that to me is not a part of this, that that can be a shop expense.
We used to do that, but with rain gear at work, but the problem is that maybe I wear extra large and you wear.
Well, there's only four of them down there. You were in a shop of what, twenty guys?
Twenty four.
Yeah, so I mean, four, four guys, we can pretty much cover it.
See, and that's another, you brought that up, uh, as rain gear and stuff, we don't have. If if they do have it, it's not an upgraded rain gear. I mean, it's.
So to me.
Something that's probably like Robert mentioned, that's a shop.
That's a shop expense. You order it and you have it in the shop and it, that's it.
And actually, one of the individuals that just wears the shirts during greasing and stuff, he'll throw his own coveralls on. If it's in the wintertime and stuff.
But I mean, I got, I got no concerns whatsoever with us. I mean, that's pretty inexpensive to have that available.
Right.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
In the shop.
Yeah.
So that, cause I know one of the biggest complaints I've heard from the one that is upset is that it's gonna be added whatever at home. Well, we can alleviate that by having coveralls or whatever. If they're gonna get greasy, you got coveralls available. And if you don't wear them, that's your choice.
Yeah.
I mean, that one individual, he wears, you know, the shirt and pants. And every, every morning or every two days, he brings the dirty laundry back and ta- takes the new stuff. You know, he's off doing swapping, but.
But what I'm saying is that that should cut down on
Right.
the level of soiling.
Right, right.
Okay. Is my thought.
Mm hmm.
Yeah, that that's pretty much cover personal clothing.
Yeah.
No getting around it, uh. I, I agree with the concept except for the fact can we do this here just for road crew or have we gotta get it into the policy? So that somewhere down the line, we're not all gonna be here.
Well, if we're gonna make a motion, the motion's gonna be to add it to the policy.
Okay, okay.
And it'll be the.
Whatever we decide, we're motioning to add to the policy.
Okay.
It'd be the active road crew highway.
Correct.
They are mostly trying to have Katie come up with a draft of what you decide to be approved at the next meeting to be added to the policy.
Sounds good.
Um, is this something you think I should run by the LCT about adding something to the policy? Like, is there a process for that?
No, policy mail is just us.
Okay, men, men or something.
It's our, so it's literally just adding it and we approve it.
Right.
Put it behind.
So I don't think we necessarily even need the motion tonight. If we're all in agreement, what we ask Katie to do for next meeting is to draft a policy that states only active road crew members will be of it, will be eligible for the clothing reimbursement or whatever you wanna call it, whatever it is gonna be called in the books. The reimbursement, two hundred and fifty dollars between July first and December thirty first and two hundred and fifty dollars between January first to June thirtieth.
That sounds good.
And it's a reimbursable.
With the caveat that the the road crew is also uh going to get coveralls and stuff that.
I don't think you need that in there. It's just gonna be, it's just gonna be provided. That's gonna be, we've instructed the road commissioner to do that. You don't want, I.
If we do policy changes, though, wasn't there hearing time that we're supposed to do that?
Not with your, not with your personnel policy.
I wanna, maybe we ought to check that, but I that's maybe in this, at this point, a minor discussion. Just check it.
Yeah.
Uh, but I think that, uh, you know, you pretty much ask Katie to.
She's drafting it. We're gonna approve it next meeting.
And, um, you're gonna investigate that as well.
And then a memo goes out to the employees, a formal memo from the board.
Right.
So, since we're talking about personnel policy, there's quite a few other things that you folks have kind of talked about hammering out too. Um, like, for instance, right now, everybody gets snow day pay regardless of if they're available or not. So, like, are you, are those the kinds of things that you're willing to hammer out and get done finally?
My feeling is if the policy opens up, we start one thing, we gotta continue with that laundry list of
Policy changes.
A policy changes.
And rather than just piecemealing it and sending out eight million memos.
Yep, have it all done.
So do you want Cash, Katie and I to sit down before the next meeting and take a look at the personnel policy and come up with some recommendations to present to you at the next board meeting?
I would say so.
Yeah, that'd be a good idea because.
Congratulations, you just got another job.
So that will be my task and the uniform thing?
Yep. Recommendations of updates.
No, no, it needs to be done. It's part of the VLCT recommendations for insurance.
More importantly, that's.
Once it's done, it's done.
To your point, there wasn't too many uh road commissioners that wanted to take the time to do that. So you're doing the right thing. You're being asked by the select board to uh to do this.
You didn't ask me. I just gotta hand it to me.
Oh, we passed the buck.
So I mean, I think that's all you have to do tonight. I think we're gonna have it for next meeting and
Yeah.
Be good to go.
We don't wanna vote on something we don't have and.
No.
All right. Uh, old business cemetery discussion. What do you, what do you got there, Ron?
I I know we received a phone call. I know it's been taken care of now, but I guess there was concerns regarding the lateness of how Chip and Hook got taken care of. And it was just mowed for the first time last week or the other day.
Yeah, so pictures were sent along that showed that Chip and Hook Cemetery had dandelions and grass that were well over the three inches that so our contract with the mowing company specifically says that the grass shall be no longer than three inches tall. Um, so this past weekend, the cemetery here got mowed for the second time and Chip and Hook got mowed for the first time. Um, there was also some concern that there were still some branches um or partial tree down up in Chip and Hook that still has not been picked up and taken care of, um, which says in our contract that that would be like part of spring cleaning. Um, so I guess my recommendation would be maybe to have Katie send um, a note to the mowing company, just reminding them of their contractual obligations as far as the three inch um height limit for grass and uh maybe asking them to go ahead and take care of the downed limbs that are up in Chip and Hook. Um, she has a really good relationship with them, so, and they've been very communicative to her, um, so.
I have no problem with that, but I. I have no problem with that, but I will stress that it needs to happen tomorrow because Memorial Day is Monday. There's, there's no, I mean, if there's stuff that needs attending to, I know our contract specifically says that they need to be in tip top shape for Memorial Day.
Right.
Yes, it does.
So.
It actually, the contract, we pulled it, looked at it today as well. It also states for Mother's Day. Um, so that did not, that was not the case this year for Mother's Day, that they were in tip top shape. Um, but just going forward, so you folks know, we did look at that contract, um, cause it prior to this year's contract, I believe it always was Memorial Day is the first kind of, but with the changing of the weather and the seasons, um, and it getting warmer sooner. Um, I know that the contract, Mother's Day was added to the contract, so.
I've moved my lawn already three times.
Yeah.
So up there on the hill, for some reason, I don't know what the hell.
Just one thing, I don't know if it's time to bring it up, I'm gonna bring it up. The Marsh Cemetery at Gilman Farm.
Yep.
Why isn't mowed the whole length of fence? The last thirty feet is not mowed and the grass is not.
You're talking on the roadside.
On the roadside.
I noticed that too.
My feeling is it should be mowed right to the end of the fence.
Wonder if there's stones or something in there.
Well, then it should be weed whacked.
Yeah.
Could just throw it out there.
So I would say, Katie, get in touch with them tomorrow.
Do remind them about Memorial Day. That's a good point, Bob. Or anything else?
Have those trees been trimmed at the?
No, we need to do that too. Remember Michael's gonna help.
Yeah.
He'll volunteer.
You remember that? The trees needed trimming over at, is it Smith?
Wasn't, uh, what's the name was talking about going down there and I told him that he was just up here.
This was back in the fall.
Huh?
This was back in the fall.
Yeah, but then Kevin, thank you. Why the hell I can't remember the name.
Kevin Pack?
Yeah, and he, he said something about he was.
If he's able, I'd, I'd be interested in going down with him with a town truck. And if he was able to lop, because I can't handle a saw yet.
Yeah.
He can lop them off, we can put them in the town truck.
Can you give him a call on that?
Yeah.
And if he absolutely needs.
I don't know when, but we can do it.
I mean, if he, it set a time up with him and if he can, needs help, I'll go down and make sure Cash can use one hand and.
Yep.
It's the only board.
Mike did volunteer for that.
Yeah.
No, I, no, I don't mind. Long as somebody comes down there, because I don't know what I'd be cutting. I could see it all now.
Okay.
Maybe a couple hours to your clock, Cash.
Yeah.
All right, new business fireworks permit.
I forwarded an email from him, um, requesting that.
Where is this?
This is on, uh, six ninety-eight Knights Road in Towne of Clarendon, uh.
For July fourth, so he's just way ahead of the game.
Yeah, permit is for seven, four, twenty-one. One hour or less. No lanterns, have a fire extinguisher, call nine one one if something happens, no fireworks. After ten PM, launch away the combustibles. Notify any neighbors, especially if they have pets.
Um, I, I think you guys got this part, but he wanted you guys to know that they're to be displayed on the evening of July fourth, no later than ten PM and weather permitting. If conditions aren't too dry, he will not light the fireworks. Um, for added information, they will not include larger sized fireworks. They'll be as small as he has a child with sensory issues to sound. Um, he likes to do things the right way and he had a permit last year from the fire department. And he had no complaints or issues from his neighbors, so.
Make a motion, we approve?
Second that.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all of the pervert please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Pass this along to Clayton, right?
Um, you guys handle that now, I believe. So I just will make a copy and give.
Clayton should have some information because he know he's gonna get a phone call.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. All right, Beamers Audit Engagement Letter.
Okay, so Beamers is the Vermont Municipal Retirement System, and so I don't botch this. The Vermont State Treasurer's Office on behalf of the Vermont Municipal Retirement System has contracted with Sullivan Powers and Company to perform an examination of census data that we have provided to the systems for the period July first, twenty nineteen through June, June thirtieth, twenty twenty. Basically, um, the state has contracted with an outside audit firm to conduct an audit on our, we were selected for, um, for our information that we submit to our, um, it retirement, uh, Beamers Retirement Fund, um, for fiscal year twenty, so last fiscal year. Um, in front of you, you have the engagement letter that is needing to be signed so that Sullivan Powers can do their thing. Um, we know Sullivan Powers well. They were here, not last year, the year before, to do a, um, full external audit for us, um, so they are very familiar with us. They did briefly look at our, um, retirement when they were here doing our full audit the last time. I suspect that this will go very smoothly. Um, I've already pulled all of the data that they need to look at. Um, we don't have a lot of employees, so it's not a whole lot of documentation for them to look through. Uh, and Jordan is looking to be here on June tenth, uh, for maybe an hour or two. Um, but in order for them to do that, um, you have to sign the engagement letter, um, and again, there is no financial obligation of the town, um, that's being paid for by the state of Vermont. And, uh, it's required, there's.
So moved.
Definitely somebody's hungry and, uh, I'm gonna add to that motion that looks like they want the whole board to sign it.
So moved.
All right, is, is that okay with you, Bob?
Yeah.
Okay, there's a motion made, seconded. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Anyone opposed, okay.
Hungry.
Bob.
Wait, uh, under new business afterwards, huh?
Uh, transfer station metal pile. You provided some pictures of signs here, Katie?
Yeah, um, this is just a follow-up. I think at our last meeting, we talked about, um, like there was a refrigerator at Gleason Road Transfer Station that had freon in it. So I played a lot of phone tag with different people trying to figure out if, how to get this refrigerator taken care of. And ended up being a can of worms and kind of an ongoing issue with our town having appliances with freon. Um, so we talked to the transfer station attendants and they just recommended that we don't accept appliances that have freon in them, which is also what Mark Shay recommended.
Which I thought that was our policy anyway.
Yeah.
I didn't realize it. Well, I thought that was official policy. But anyway, I'll make a motion that we authorize Katie to order these signs and make it official that we do not accept appliances.
Or air conditioners and.
Well, any appliance that contains freon.
The, now, do you, are you suggesting all three D signs?
Yep.
Okay.
Uh, okay, those are just Google image signs. I was gonna make something out of all those, like.
For one sign.
Yeah.
That's fine.
Okay.
Whatever works.
All right, so Rob, uh, made the motion, go ahead.
Is the motion that we no longer accept them or we're just enforcing that?
No, enforcement.
Yeah, we just, we don't accept anything that has freon, any appliance with freon.
Now, af- even after they're drained?
No, after they're drained according to.
No, I would not do that either.
So.
Cause you're, you're gonna run into, if they wanna take something drained, Hubbard's takes them for nothing.
Okay.
So.
I just wanna clarify, that's all.
At least they used to.
Because Mark was saying if you accept that the transfer station without freon, they're supposed to have a sticker marked that accompanied it for them.
I didn't know that, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
So.
All right, so Rob, you made the motion for Katie more or less to pursue this, come up with a sign. Did you second that? And it was lengthy discussion. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Now, also to run along, maybe, maybe you're gonna head it for these propane tanks that are coming in there.
Yeah, that's also an issue. I don't know.
Make a motion that the transfer station does not accept propane tanks under any circumstance.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Katie, we have to make sure that Tom gets this information.
Yeah.
He'll be in tomorrow morning.
Okay, so we can, we'll pass on to what we did here.
Make a motion that Katie also orders or includes in the sign, no propane tanks.
I'll second that.
All those in favor of the motion? All right, anyone opposed? All right, anything else on the transfer station? All right, um, Heidi, do you have anything you wanna report? Katie, do you have anything else that you have to report?
I don't.
Okay, I would entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Make a motion for executive session not to exceed fifteen minutes.
And the title of the.
For legal issues.
And you agree with that, lit for legally? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
So go ahead, Cash.
Make a motion, come out of executive session.
I'll second it.
All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Uh, Rob, would you, uh, like to make a statement pertaining to the discussion?
Um, so there was a legal discussion regarding, um, uh, a situation on Airport Road which involves, um, some flags which, one of which involves, uh, an obscenity. Um, the town has researched and, uh, gone to the extent that it can do, um, to resolve the issue. And, uh, at this point, the town has done what it can and that's pretty much the extent of it. There's, there's no further action that the count, the town can take.
We did, uh, notify our legal representatives, both Vermont Lees, the city town, and our town lawyer, and this pretty much is what.
We've been advised.
Right.
Yep.
So. All right, Cash, do you have a, any concerns?
The, I'm con- about the noise, um, had a neighbor that has real loud music and stuff and I, I don't know about the noise ordinance or anything we have in town, which I don't think we do. Is this a state police or sheriff's issue when they go to two o'clock in the morning?
Yes, I would think. Uh, however, this, both of those organizations are gonna say, well, what does your ordinance say?
Yeah, we've gone the route before you came onto the board a couple different times regarding a noise ordinance, um, there's a few issues with the noise, noise ordinance, one of which is what's the official, how, who, who is the measurer and how is it going to be measured? Especially when you have to set a decibel level, um, we had it come up once because of gunshots going off in a section of town well beyond.
Well, we're talking about like music and stuff.
Yeah, so I.
It was brought to my attention.
It's a, it's a difficult.
It's, it's a touchy.
It's been a di- it's been another touchy and difficult situation.
Right, right.
Neighbors have the right to call the police department, the sheriff or the, or the, uh, state police, uh.
That's all I have, that's all I have.
Kinda long, same line, but got different sheriff's department, uh, I know they've been around some and I realize they can't be everywhere at once. But the speeding on Molten Avenue and in the village is becoming unreal up there. We have one particular guy, I don't know if he works at the mill or at the school, but just about noon every day, he comes up with a black pickup. I've tried to get the license number on him, but he buys it quick, you can't.
Yeah.
Uh, and he'll be by my house. He's, he's gotta be doing at least sixty.
On Molten?
On Molten Avenue.
That's ridiculous.
And, uh, we got some motorcycles that kinda zip right along there too, but I realize they're a very hard thing to catch for a police officer. It, uh.
Yeah, um, actually the sheriff stopped in today and, um, she actually asked if there were any issues going on in town.
Um, and an interesting thing about the motorcycles is they can't chase them.
No.
Because it's so dangerous, um, but I can let her know about the Molnab speeding.
Yeah.
And we did pass on information that was Doug, uh, Bradley who.
Yeah, she sat up there.
Up on West Timmer Road.
Yeah, she actually talked with him.
Agreed it now.
And I, actually I spoke with her this morning about East Timmer Road. I have a lot of complaints there.
Yeah, well, I do, wicked amount of traffic on that road, holy miracle.
Traffic is everywhere, wicked lately, seems to be.
He did mention to you that, um, she sat up on West Timmer Road today and she had a few neighbors stop by who were traveling through, who advised her on the time when they see the most speeders up there, so she was going to.
Some information.
Take notice?
Yeah.
Rob, did you have anything?
Uh, no, I did not have anything more tonight.
Well, then.
So moved.
All in favor? Got to second it. All in favor? Anyone opposed?